Well, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, granted.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Glad you mentioned that, so she didn't have to wait around. And with that accomplished, we are ready for Keith and Jeremy. Jeremy Dub of KJG Engineering.
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
This has been brought to my attention from you guys that interest the fact of having a structural engineering company come in and do an assessment. I have reached out to KJG, the courthouse, to come in and Jeremy met with me and did a very vague overview. That's way beyond my expertise and the estimate.
I have it here somewhere. Yep.
The estimate in front of you, there's three different types of estimates on there, and I'm gonna let Jeremy touch on those estimates and stuff like that. If you have any questions.
Sure, yeah. We tried to break them out and kind of gave you an à la carte choice just to help explain, but my understanding from Keith's descriptions and a brief tour about a month ago, that there's kind of a combination of concerns about potentially some structural movement, and that's some cracking in interior walls, which may or may not have anything to do with settlement. There may also be some concerns with the aging facade, and we run into that, and a lot of historic buildings are starting to lose some pieces. So the structural portion that I advise for you would include, kind of broken it out as an interior and exterior. The interior would obviously focus on everything we can see inside, trying to figure out where there are cracks, what the cause of that might be, how active the movement could be. Also been up in the attic during a brief tour, and we'd spend some time up in there, around the dome area, just making sure that everything's structurally sound there. Obviously summarize that in a report. Any report we make for any of these three items would include photographs, recommendations of what we believe the repair or for the projects would be made, along with a cost estimate. Obviously, we would not be capable of making those repairs. We would be just giving an engineer's estimate for budgeting purposes, of which you might want to start setting aside. The exterior structural that I've itemized for you would be us renting a boom lift, or I know, you know, a decade ago when we did all the facade projects here, dealt by body works, I believe, limped the city, a bucket truck, and then used it to inspect all the facade, so I don't know if there's agreements for anything like that in town, but we would, the cost of a lift rental is not included in that. But we can do a boom lift around all four sides of the building, checking for any loose facade and any other structural items that might show up when we're 30 feet in the air looking at it that aren't apparent from the ground. And then the other piece we advise is probably is a more difficult inspection in the structural, really, and that's trying to identify where water infiltration may be coming in. We've seen some evidence in some interior walls, where the plaster's kind of bubbling and peeling, some moisture getting in somehow, so that's a little bit more of a tricky inspection, but it would also include a full perimeter inspection of the window sills, some of those balconies that have a unique wave directing water away. So obviously, the efficiency would be if you decided to do the exterior structural and envelope inspection at the same time, we could obviously do that at the same days and use the same rental fee for the bucket at that time. We would have different personnel focusing on the structural portion versus the water portion if they could do that and save some rental fee if you chose to do that. Other than that, that would be the only advantage to doing it all at once. So I kind of wanted to piece out, just not knowing what urgency and budget was, but again, other than the lift rental, there would be really no other cost if you chose to piece it out separately. And we can certainly hold those prices for at least up to the year if it was something you didn't want to do now, but wanted to look at, so.
Well, Jeremy, I have a question, gentlemen.
Sure.
And I think you've answered it, but I haven't been able to grasp it. It says, "External structural inspection and report, $3,500. Building envelope inspection and report, $8,200." I'm not in my own mind understand the difference between exterior structure and building envelope.
Sure. So, yeah, for the exterior structure, we would be focusing on the actual pieces of most of the limestone facade, just checking to see if there's any corrosion. A lot of those pieces are, have steel parts embedded in them that adhere it to the structure, so we'd be looking for signs of any kind of movement in those pieces. Are any of them, I mean, we'll physically see if any of them are loose. So the structural portion would not really touch the windows or any of the moisture protection. The other piece is where we have architects on our staff looking at the window sills, the caulking, the drainage for balcony, and really looking at how water is kept out of the building. So again, those two different people might be in the same bucket at the same time, but they'd be focusing on different elements, so.
Thanks. One thing you told me, Jeremy, is that when you move forward with any of these estimates, they will prioritize the list of repairs, correct?
Sure, yeah.
On knowing that, you know, budgets and everything else, they prioritize what should be at first and taken care of to get a result.
Yes, yes. Obviously, you know, the structural inspection is a little bit easier to do than what you obviously could uncover some more life safety issues. Typically, leaks are not immediately going to cause any life safety issues, but could over time, so again, what Keith said, we would prioritize in our report, hey, here are 20 things we recommend, but this is the order we would recommend you approaching them, just from an important standpoint, so.
Well, it has to be 20 years since you moved in the dome and the roof. So, you know, it's time to really look at that and go through.
Let me tell you, it's hard, I didn't know what to say. In our cursory review, I did not stumble across anything structurally that I was immediately concerned about. If I had, I would have shared that with you today. Doesn't mean there's not something working there, but even being up on the dome and around, I think a lot of the cracks you're seeing in here, we're gonna find are either normal, moderate movement, nothing to be concerned about, or it could actually be water that is getting in there and causing cracks that appear to have structural reasons and they actually don't. So I'm hopeful the structural portion for the inside would yield a pretty short list of concerns, but again, that's after just a couple hour tour and so far. The exterior one, hard to say. I know there haven't been repairs done that, but I would tell you, our experience with buildings of this age, that exterior can take quite a beating through the winter, and oftentimes, there's not a great deal of foreshadowing if there are pieces coming loose until something actually starts to do it. So I guess if you had to prioritize between the two, structural, I would definitely recommend the exterior first, I think that could have the most potential for issues, more than the interior.
So for you, for maybe a full dome deal, would that all three up together?
Correct. And again, other than the shared lift rental, there's really no, no other safety if you chose to do forward one at a time, so.
Off the top of your head, what's the rental cost? 14, 2 is what those three are looking to.
Yeah. I don't have a good number on the rental. We would anticipate probably two day, until I would anticipate five days, $100, to have that delivered if there wasn't any city, county, or donated equipment to be used and saved at cost.
You don't have an engineer budget issue, do you?
No.
You don't have anything left over, yellow?
No.
The only thing we have to, we have our $100,000 from.
From Q cap.
From Q cap.
Courthouse renovation.
Courthouse renovation, so.
And I think we better do the full new deal, that way we can look at everything in and maybe give us that list of priorities, guys, and we can just chisel through and hammer out the new town.
Yeah.
No, we're already warmed up.
Yeah. We realistically wouldn't probably go start the first few years, even if we could, certainly there wouldn't be any building until 2023, and we can schedule that if there are certain dates to work with, you know.
Something has come up that I'd like to ask you about, and as we're preparing for this hearing and subsequent trial, it's gonna be a big deal here, and the emergency management committee, we were, the question came up of the loaded bearing capacity of the balconies around out here. I've never seen any, I have no idea what they're holding.
And I reviewed all blueprints, even the original blue ones, and the little patch does not live it on.
I would be happy to take a look at those, and we could, if information's readable on there, we should be able to come up with a pretty, I think it's probably a repetitive construction, so it wouldn't take much for us to come up with an estimate. We have to make some assumptions on what the concrete strength may been at that time, and reinforcing steel is a lower grade than what we use today, but we've done that in the past. I wouldn't anticipate any concerns. Current codes require 100 pounds of square foot when you have public gathering space, which is a significant load, but based on what I've seen, the guts of the structure, I would not anticipate any concerns with that unless we saw some deterioration or something that had damaged previously. Really, without the blueprints from doing a concrete construction, there's nothing to see unless you, unless you know what steel went in there. Structural steel construction's a little bit easier, if we can see it, touch it, measure it, the concrete is in good shape and not showing the rebar, it's difficult. So if the information's readable on there, that would be something we need to do for, as part of this.
What do you gentlemen think, should we ever do that for Dr. Harrow, but we missed this whole series of hearings and trials, it's getting on for a long time, we're gonna have big crowds to give a party for.
I'm gonna need to pour over these drawings as part of this anyway, so I'd be happy to look at those and do a check for it. If I find that somehow it's not repetitive and is gonna take, you know, a huge amount of time, I would let you know, but I don't think that'll be a big deal for us, I'm happy to do it as part of this.
There'll be money well spent. You wanna make a motion, you can do the full new deal, all three. I think it's information we need, so you know where we're at. I would favor it, please. You'll reassure us of what we need to do for a year and a half.
So I have a motion and a second to approve the agreement for professional services with KJG Architects, KJG Engineering. And Mr. Jeremy Dub, is that correct?
From the front Q cap.
From the Q cap.
From Q cap, yeah. Which will have to be approved by the council. Those are not? No?
Not your, we have a budget.
Okay, all right, good. We have.
But if it's not done this year, if we just leave this, we'll have this contract and we can encumber that money for next year.
Okay, well, that's, that's what my little mind was working on. We got, we can encumber this out of this year's money, and it will not affect the $100,000 we have going in next year. Wondered. Okay.
Now, that has to be agreed with the council.
The encumbrance. Are we on board with everything? Motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We will, I will sign these right now.
Thank you, gentlemen.
How many copies do we need, like two or three?
At least two. One for Jeremy and one for the other. So you think that.
Sign my motion now?
Sure, that'd be great. So if you had to guess, how many people could be down for 10 to tomorrow?
Shoulder to shoulder. Typically, typically adults standing shoulder to shoulder in the crowd is 40 to 50 pounds per square foot, typically. Besides by the code, the current code requiring 100 is just as a complete, you know, safety factor two, just because you don't want any event of emergency to have any concern, so I would, I would be fairly surprised if we don't, if we find the information on the original drawings that we don't find, it's more than that. Typically found public structures like this were overbuilt and overdesigned, if anything, early part of last century. Right. I think unless there's been something that's been changed, damaged.
Jeremy could sign that, and then we'll have it all set.
Thank you, Keith, for bringing that up.
I don't think you have any more.
Man, totally agree with you.
I think we're good. It's all rolling, good, it's staying on a bird.
I think that is awesome. Four months from tomorrow.
We appreciate it, look forward to working with you.
Well, that's, she's got it.
I got one in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dustin Thrive, BW Construction. Good morning.
Morning. Quincy sends us regards from Mexico.
Yeah, gentlemen, thanks.
Enjoying the sunshine, I guess.
You should learn how to vacation during this nice weather we have here.
Ah, it's beautiful outside, why would you learn here? A couple things, just to give an update on where we are with the progress on the jail. We have received, a few weeks ago, the final construction documents from Alabas. Our team has been going through those documents, putting together RFIs, requests for information, getting some questions out. We've sent those to subcontractors, a large amount of subcontractors have received them. Our current timeline is that internally, we would be receiving bids from subcontractors on December 8th, and then it takes about a week for us to scrub through subcontractors and make sure we have everything, the right numbers, put that all together into a nice package, that we call our GMP, which will include the price, the schedule, any other scope of clarifications. We're set to have that done by the 15th of December, and so, and ready to present to the county. One of the questions I have is how do we want to present that? I believe you guys have a council meeting on the 15th, it's the third Thursday is the council meeting. I don't know if you want us to present to the council prior to presenting in this forum, your meeting's the 19th here. So we have, we have options there, but ultimately.
After the meeting, then have him present that? Would that be, if council, if council wants to come?
But we have a Christmas, we have a Christmas meeting. But we will be able to buy one, and we have that one.
I don't like to have council involved in, I mean, we're in the middle of it together.
If there's a joint meeting, that's ideal. I mean, I don't mind coming up here, it's, but it's, every question gets heard by everybody.
Yeah.
It's clarified, everybody's on the same page, and.
We have had problems with not being on the same page, and so everything we can do to make sure everybody gets the same information at the same time, has an opportunity to ask the same questions in front of everybody, good. So I think Steve made an excellent suggestion there. Would you say Florida, 1:00 maybe?
Just work on the 30, please.
1:30, okay.
1:30 on the 19th.
I will, I will tell you that I did ask the council at the last meeting about resetting the ARCA joint meeting.
Uh, yes.
And they followed up to center fifth, or at 1:00, or the 15th at 1:00. So I'm just, I'm just throwing those out. I mean, I know you said the fifth would not work, but the 15th, you would be ready, or you would be rather.
We're gonna be done. We could probably make the 15th work in the afternoon to present.
We have a meeting, it would cover both sides, ARCA and.
Well, it'll be a long meeting, too.
It would be. What do you think, gentlemen?
Well, wherever you'd be here, we're gonna have to use that.
I just want you to know those two days, so.
Cause 15th, I would go until after 3:30, and that would take us by the end of the evening, late afternoon. Lot of information, we'll do it at the 19th, right after we meet.
At 1:30.
So we'll do this at 1:30, and then do the ARCA thing after that, right?
They can be all on the same.
They can bring it up at 19. Just telling you, those are the two days of video.
To me, if I'm liking it, it's a sudden, they'll be here at 19.
What are we talking about now? I'm just talking about him, okay? We're talking about you.
Talking about him. Then if they're, then if they're willing.
We can talk about the ARCA one night.
Okay, well, we'll shoot for the 19th at 1:30, unless we're here, otherwise, we'll present the GMP. One of the questions, and I don't know, Quincy and I have talked about it, I think you may have asked, the scope that I believe the RDC is doing for extending utilities to the site, that's currently not a part of our, our blueprints that we're pricing for the jail, but my understanding is the same civil engineer that did, that did the jail design did that. Do you want us to speak to the RDC and try to get that information so that we can provide a price for that and include it within the GMP, we can separate it as an alternate, or is there other plans for that being, being done? There's other bidding requirements or other things that need to be done that the BOD statute doesn't allow, based on how we have it?
I would say that.
The utility extensions that are required to the site, water sewer storm.
All that I have heard, and I have, was unable to attend the speech because of documents. Is there just interested in getting it down the road as far as the hookup? Like, we're up to do that.
Yeah, we, yeah, that we, right now, our, our documents that we are pricing show us extending on, within the footprint of the jail site. We're, we're going to the property line and tying into each utilities. So if they're there, we have the tie-in. My question is, how are they getting there? Who's, who's ultimately gonna do that?
The water, mom.
Water, sanitary.
You signed a construct, just construct a water main and extract extension last meeting, so I know that's been done.
Okay.
The sanitary sewer instruction permit, that's been done.
Permits or, or.
It's the.
Bits for.
You received notice that it had been sent on, took from Greg.
So he's, he's probably submitted for permitting, which is fine. My question would be, who's constructing, and how does that, how does that? Cause when I talked to Greg previously, it's been a week or two. The sign was still kind of being finalized, but where that's being built was to be determined. It's easier for us to do it, just because it's all done, coordinated, and it's there when we want it, it doesn't have to be, it's not a problem for us to coordinate with somebody else.
I think if you got one person involved, then you do it all.
I will get, I'll reach out to Greg and get the information, and then we'll, we'll start pricing it with our, with our, with the jail. And break it up separate, and then we can determine how we need it.
Cause we're getting assistance on that part of it.
Yeah. I'll, I'll give it them and.
You got a question here?
Having to do with that, I know RDC hasn't really seen any numbers, but the other question that came up is where are we at on easements for trying to run it down the south side of, what is it, 100? Which is what we're looking at, because funds with the RDC, with some of the latest things we're seeing, we've got a lot of people wanting some major dollars from the RDC, and we can't fund everything. So we need to know, we need to see some numbers, but, you know, nobody even knows where the right of way is at.
Where are we on that, Ted?
We're still working on it. The, I'm reaching out to attorney from Minneapolis, he has some, he's got three condemnations in circuit court here, and we're trying to get that wrapped up here, it's impossible. I don't, I don't have any more information, nobody's told me that there's been any change in the easement. Is there gonna be a change in the easement?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, cause I, I have, I didn't gather that from Greg, from what Greg said to us, so.
Yeah, I didn't either.
So.
I didn't anticipate, man. Whatever that is, that we have worked on, that's what we're gonna have to work with.
That's what, what I've been given, yeah. I wanna make sure that, case, I need to talk to Greg, cause I wasn't here meeting with Greg, was, was that the setup? Yeah, I wasn't here with the setup.
I don't, I really don't think that he, you need to come in, he just sent them.
He just sent them.
For his signature.
I'm gonna call Greg, too. I'm gonna follow up on that.
Okay, please. We'll get you an answer on that.
Worst case, we'll get the documents, and we'll have a price for that, so we'd have numbers by 19, and we'll have that number sooner, so I can send that separate to say, hey, here's what we think the value of that work is.
Does redevelopment meeting in December, did they say?
As far as I know, we're, it's on the 15th.
So they're, that's on the 15th.
We would have that number, we would have that number that I could give before that meeting.
Send it to me.
Absolutely. Okay, the last thing that I have from an update perspective, so our attorneys at Hall Render are working on BOT agreements, to get a draft agreement that we can get to Ted and everybody to start circulating, so that hopefully we get all the agreement language and everything worked out. So once we have the GMP and council, and your board signs off on it, it just gets plugged in as an exhibit, and you guys can execute the agreement. There was a few things, I believe Quincy sent an email back.
He's asking for some documents, and he needs to have those.
Yes, so there was, I think it was back on the 3rd, where you guys had, the committee recommended the board accept our proposal, so we need minutes from that meeting, and then the hearing that was held where we had been selected, and the subsequent resolution awarding that project to us. So the resolution and that is, I think that was all back in October. And then the, the other question, I'll read what was, what was asked for, the resolution of Board of Commissioners specifically adopting the provisions of Indiana Code 523.
That was like back in April.
Yeah, the resolution that was included, appointed in our committee but didn't adopt the statute itself, is what our attorneys have said. Is there a resolution that does this, or do we, do you feel that referring to the 523 and to BOD is sufficient? If that's what, if you feel that's sufficient, our attorneys are saying that it would be wise for you to give an opinion. it would be wise for you to give an opinion to the board on that.
Do they have what we did on the twenty, that in April?
I believe that's what we gave them, and this is their response to that.
I've sent some to Quincy, I haven't sent all, he asked for some more.
Okay, we'll follow up on that. We did everything according to, you know, hearing and.
I don't know about the April thing, I, I can't remember what I sent him.
The April thing, our, our.
We adopted IC five twenty-three, and there were, I, I don't know, I don't know if it was in form of a resolution, or it was actually a motion, but I think it was in the form of an actual resolution. He does not have the resolution there?
And that's what we don't have, that's why.
I'm sure, I'm, I'm sure there was a resolution, because we had, we had the document go by. So that was in April.
Yeah, if we could get that, and then, sounds pretty much like the resolution in the minutes from October third. I think we have everything we need, that our attorneys can get that drafted. There's just, there's so many different little steps to that statute, and you know, you think everything's been done, we just wanna make sure we get them, so that it's, they check the box, they file, and everybody has it, and it's, it's all done right, so. But yeah, if we could get that as soon as possible, then I'll try to get our attorneys to get that draft out. I'd like them to get the draft circulated between the view and everybody, so they have a chance to look at it before we present on the nineteenth, just so we kinda get the language behind this, it's good. That's all I have, update wise. Any questions or needs?
No, but I certainly, for me, no more questions, but certainly appreciate you coming in. I like, we like to hear how we're coming along, and people like to hear about what's happening. I had a couple of questions last week, from people, well, what's going on? How, how's this coming along? I'm not sure.
Yeah, well, it's coming along well, people are excited, we've, we've had a lot of meetings with different contractors, just to, to make sure they know it, what's going on, and what the expectations are, so we'll, we'll be back on the nineteenth, and in the meantime, we'll get some agreements communicated back and forth, and looking forward to getting to that point, and after that, if all goes well, we'll, we'll start running.
Good.
All right, thank you.
Can we start on the other, I wanted to make an announcement about the highway worker, Bob Lowry's house, he pissed his house burnt. And so we're gonna take another donation here in the courthouse, and I know they are at the highway, and the monetary donations are gift cards. They lost almost everything except the one vehicle, is what I understood.
Just after his heart surgery.
So I just wanted to plug in there, please, somebody who'd like to donate, there's gonna be a donation jar in our office, so. He's worked for the county.
Nearly some years.
I was gonna say a long time, yeah, and it's very sad, we've both had medical problems, and.
Well, I'm gonna intercheck something here too, and that has to do with this, with the redevelopment committee after. I have now missed another meeting of that, because when I said I'll take this, take this spot, there's only Mondays that always met. And I have set aside Mondays and Tuesdays, and usually Wednesdays for doing anything I have to do with here in the county. Thursdays and Fridays is when I have blood tests, doctor appointments, chemo sessions, and all that stuff. I have not, I, then, then they moved the meeting to Thursdays, because Josh couldn't be here on Mondays. And so I'm, if anybody would like to take that spot, I would give it up. Huh?
What time will we, evening?
One thirty.
That's right, and it doesn't have to be one of those three. I enjoyed being on that committee, because I've learned an awful lot, and, and I, I, I like to I like to know what's going on in that, so I can report to you about it. But I wanted you to know that I have not lived up to anything I wanted to, or haven't been there the last, well, I've met, met two meetings. So, think about that, if you, if you, if I'm able to decide you wanna take it, or if you're gonna keep it, or if you want somebody else to take it. No hard feelings on my part, I just want you to know that.
You know anybody that might be willing to say anyone?
It's nice for five, if ever one of us can have a spot, so we can have a great report at this meeting, but but here I am, not able to give you one, because I wasn't there.
It definitely won't last that long sometimes.
Sometimes they're half hour meetings like that. It's just, huh?
I would consider it.
Okay, consider it, think about it.
They moved it to three, three thirty or so, I can, depending. I'm gonna be short on vacation time coming up soon, so.
What they did is, Josh is here for our council that morning.
Also, a little difficult, then?
Yes, and then they just hired an attorney, Eric Summers, who is, you know, attorney, so.
He's probably locked in, I want to talk to him.
Put that on the next agenda.
Oh, you can, yeah. Okay, let's move on down through here now. We have a courthouse Christmas luncheon on the seventh nineteenth. What do we need to know, Ted?
I'd like to, not permission, close the doors from twelve to one, so they can enjoy this whole lunch without any office work, it doesn't cost any, none of it, no tax money is used for this, these are always donations.
Motion second, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Offices will be notified to put it up in their office.
Okay, you gonna let us go up, we need to do it, what?
Yeah.
Courthouse grounds application by the American Legion. Yeah, that's what we did, okay. Courthouse grounds application by Delphi Main Street.
Go right ahead. Yes, morning commissioners, JT Dome, Community Development Director of the City of Delphi. Uh, yes, on the application, and then first, I wanna clarify your question earlier, we're coming up on the hundred and sixty-seven.
I know it's been a couple of days.
Yeah, that, that it has clearly, quite the history. So on the application for the courthouse usage, the matrix plan to do a Santa on the square event. We're planning to have Santa set up there on the gazebo, so we have some committee members that'll be decorating the gazebo. So we're planning to have Santa there on that tenth and seventeenth, and as of right now, Santa's schedule looks like between eleven and two on the tenth and seventeenth. And so we'll have Santa there on the square, uh, we've got some candy canes, I know, to include to give to some of the, the children and adults. I guess if they wanna come give Santa their, their wish list, but the Main Street, we'll be working on that, the Promotions Committee will be getting out some flyers, some information out on social media to promote the event, but that is the, that is the current schedule.
Did you buy your insurance for that? I think I have, forgot to buy. And that when?
I have a motion to approve the request for the Delphi Main Street.
It's just a damage deposit?
Okay.
Just long as we don't stick nothing in the ground?
Absolutely.
A lot of, but.
Yes, I'm always quick when we have discussions, I mean, know, know you have, we make sure nothing in the ground.
Did you get that checked out?
Would you second it?
If the grounds aren't.
Got a motion and a second on approval, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Always nice to have you here.
Likewise.
Work one appointment.
No, for Alzheimer's application, American Legion, number seven.
Oh, maybe I already signed it. There we go. I can un-sign it, ready. Uh, remembering, uh, September seventh, nineteen forty-one, Pearl Harbor, that van or they wanna put up? And it doesn't go underground, it's on the courthouse in the Interretumbe. You made a motion, your second is? In the retumbe, yeah, just prior to displaying outdoors. Got a motion, a second to approve, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Now, we'll move down to work one appointment.
Um, the only person that I had contacted about that was Jake Adams, he said he would be willing to come on that if you sort of decided, if not, that's not to be looked.
What, remind me what that is?
That's a local committee advises on one point. And they have a lot of different, uh, yeah, they, they do different seminars, and they do.
I thought I had to do some of the conferences. Well, you're, you're out practicing. I think Jake, you know, he's already involved in it in some places.
Dick Bradshaw, February nine, and he's been on a committee, I think he should be.
I'll make any motion.
A motion and a second to appoint Jake Adams to the Work One Committee, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Extension contractual service agreement with Purdue University in Carroll County, that requires a signature here.
Yeah, that's from your extension office, why you have to reassign it, it's a, we sign it every year.
Yeah.
Those two, I want you there to sign.
So I need a, a motion to, yeah, motion to. So move, second, all in favor?
Aye.
You skipped other one here.
What's that?
You skipped one, the joint meeting with the council for ARCA money.
Oh, I skipped that one too. So what did we decide on that?
If you want to, you can wait till after the holidays, as far as I'm concerned.
Let's do that.
Yeah.
I mean, we've got a lot of stuff going on, and.
Okay, a lot of motion to take it up. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passed. Now, we're down at Camden Housing. I kind of blew this one. I got a call from Andy Rogers. Right. They have a house there in town that has, it's right on, on the highway of Main Street, and it's very dilapidated condition, and they, it's gone through tax sale after tax sale, and now the taxes are so high, nobody's gonna go buy it. And, uh, he wanted us to do something about it, and I know we have done something like that before, what, where we?
You know, they can apply, petition the board commissioners to transfer it to the town.
To the town?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, do we have to take it first?
They have to, they have to do a petition. They really, we have attorneys do it.
What they want is for us to go in and tear down, like, they want the county.
Now, he never told me that. I told him that we had before, on a, on a property like that. Now, I think it was the forest school, we took it, and then we needed it to.